If you are able, please rise and join us for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the role of counsel?
Counselor member Kiossopathy?
Here.
Counselor member Bannister?
Here.
Counselor member Westfall?
Here.
Counselor member Lum?
Here.
Counselor member Grant?
Here.
Counselor member Ackerman?
Here.
Mayor Taylor?
Here.
Counselor member Eaton?
Here.
Counselor member Craple?
Here.
Counselor member Warpahowski?
Here.
Counselor member Smith?
Uh, here.
We have a quorum.
May I have a motion, please, to approve the agenda? Moved by Counselor Ackerman, seconded by Counselor Lum. Discussion of the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the agenda is approved. Do we have communications today from our city administrator?
Yes, Mayor, very briefly. There's a memorandum that we've attached that is an update to Resolution R 16469. That addresses prevailing wage rates. So that was an item counsel asked us to respond to. There's also memorandum on deer sterilization legislation, which is proposed House Bill 5321, which would seek to ban sterilization for game. We have, after consultation with the Policy Agenda Committee members, sent communications to both the members of the House Natural Resources Commission and our elected members stating our opposition to that House bill. Mr. Crawford and Mr. Delacorte will be traveling to Lansing tomorrow to provide testimony as well. The body of the memorandum that's attached is essentially the same as the body of the letter that we had sent to the representatives. And that's all I have.
Thank you. We now come to public comment reserve time. Public comment reserve time is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to counsel and the community about matters of municipal interest. To speak at public comment reserve time, one needs to have signed up in advance by contacting our city clerk. Speakers have three minutes in which to speak, so please pay close attention to the time clock. As a matter of courtesy, we may have only one person speaking at a time. And finally, if you require assistance in speaking before counsel, we'd be delighted to provide it to you. Our first speaker today is John Godfrey.
Good evening, and thank you. My name is John Godfrey, and I live at 2809 Brockman. Across Ann Arbor, there's a strong agreement that the city must encourage development of renewable energy sources. These are important and urgent goals, and they're not in question. But allowing solar collectors in front yards, as an ordinance before you would do, is not the way to move forward, and I would like to provide just two reasons for this. First, while the city must change as it grows, this ordinance risks the character and quality of our community. Counsel meetings in the past several years have provided ample evidence that residents care about our shared urban environment, the appearance of its buildings and public spaces, the design of new facilities, and the upkeep of infrastructure. This council has acknowledged these values and the importance of guidelines for the design of structures that will shape Ann Arbor's future. But the city also includes neighborhoods that will be affected most by the proposed ordinance. The ordinance raises concerns, not just about safety, appearance, and potential size of these units, and the effectiveness of their screening. These structures also stand to have a considerable impact on the cityscape itself. Front yards help constitute the visual and social character of our community, and large ground-mounted arrays would disrupt this very character. A second reason to oppose this ordinance is that it makes no sense to carve out a special rule that would affect only a small proportion of Ann Arbor's properties and neighborhoods. The structure could make, at, these structures could make, at very best, only a minute contribution to the city's solar goals. A ground-mounted solar unit that measures 400 square feet, which is the footprint of a semi-trailer, produces about eight and a half annual kilowatt-hours of energy. Fifteen such arrays and fifteen front yards would yield about 127 annual kilowatt-hours. By comparison, the 14-acre solar farm that was proposed for a site near the airport would produce 2.15 annual megawatt-hours of energy, which is enough to power about 235 houses for a year. The proposed ordinance has many risks and costs and will not contribute to reaching the city's energy goals. Most U.S. cities do not allow arrays in front yards, and I strongly urge you to vote to keep solar arrays out of the front yards of Ann Arbor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker today is Irma Major.
Good evening. I'm Irma Meyer, and I live at 2809 Brockman. Over the last year, you've heard many arguments as to why most residents are opposed to allowing ground-mounted solar installations in neighborhood yards, especially open and accessible front yards. I was surprised by the staff's statement in their memo that they have no particular concern, quote, "regarding the safety of such installations in private front yards." So tonight, I'd like to share what I've learned. Because of the lack of published data on injury, I reached out to a healthcare professional for traumatic injuries, Carla Class, Managing Director of Injury Prevention at U of M's Trauma Burn Center, to ask her about research or literature on the subject. Ms. Class points out the safety risks associated with contact with these systems. One, electrical shock, electrocution, or electrical burn injuries; and two, thermal burn injuries from direct contact with the hot panels. She notes that, quote, "This might be a not-yet-emerged or fully-appreciated issue," and that "the lack of data on reported injuries may very well be the result of solar panels historically being located in areas not easily accessible by the general public," that is rooftops and fenced areas. She bases her conclusions on data, codes, and professional assessments published in worker safety articles and by the National Fire Protection Association, Liberty Mutual Insurance Company, and other sources. These systems produce as much as 600 volts of electricity on a day when the sun is out. Panels reach temperatures hot enough to cause serious burns. On July 4th, 2017, the summer, was a clear, sunny day in Ann Arbor with a high temperature of 82 degrees. Under those conditions, solar panel surfaces can be as high as 150 to 168 degrees and cause serious burns in about one second. If these systems pose a risk of injury to professionals, ground units certainly pose an even greater risk of harm to residents. We cannot conclude that placement of ground-mounted solar arrays in front yards would be safe. Of the city surveyed, the overwhelming majority protect residents by not permitting these in front yards. By allowing unsecured, low-to-the-ground installations, Ann Arbor would create opportunities for serious injury to the public, particularly curious and exploring children. I respectfully ask counsel to adopt the proposed ordinance language that excludes front yards. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dave Kennard.
Thank you, hello. My name is Dave Kennard, and I live with my family on Brockman Boulevard. My family is very pro-solar. However, we would not support an ordinance that allows ground-mounted solar arrays in front yards. We are very concerned regarding the safety of these structures. Kids play on structures, and we are concerned about the burns, shocks, falls, and cuts to neighborhood children. On a sunny 90-degree day, solar panels can reach temperatures over 150 degrees. These temperatures pose a safety risk to children and pets. We've lived on Brockman for close to 30 years. We purchased on Brockman because of the big yards, the open spaces, and the mature trees. If we were to purchase home today, and I drove down Brockman and saw a huge solar array in a front yard, I wouldn't find the street as desirable as I did 30 years ago. Aesthetics are very important to us. The natural beauty of our streets and our city is paramount. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Fay.
Good evening, and thank you. I'm going to be actually very brief. My name is Michael Fay, I live at 1531 Packard. I'll just reiterate, I think, more than anything else what was said here. I have serious concerns about solar, I am also very, very strongly supportive of developing solar energy and renewable source energy. That's also not in question for me at all. I'm concerned about the fact that it seems, and I've been in this room with the City Planning Commission, had heard discussions on two or three other occasions before, I'm concerned that policy is seem to, and policy is important as this seems to be, organized around an ordinance that will affect such a small number of people and have such a small impact, as was so eloquently just stated now. My paramount concern, though, is, as somebody who raised a child in the city, is the considerable potential for safety, especially for children, curious children, climbing on structures. I think that's something that has not been addressed to my satisfaction, and I hope that we will all take the very serious potential risks at hand, because I would like, I would hate for the policy to have to be rewritten because something tragic or unfortunate happened as a result of this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Henry Hurskowitz.
Good evening. I bring to counsel's attention the name of two women whose stories do not appear in the Ann Arbor News, The New York Times, or The Washington Post. They are Allison Chablot and Monica Schaefer. They are united, oh, excuse me. Allison hails from Great Britain, and Monica is a Canadian citizen. They are united in the fact that they are both musicians and both sing satirical verses challenging the truthfulness of Holocaust narratives. Their followings are small, but vociferous and engaged. Monica Schaefer lives in Jasper, Alberta, and was attending the trial of lawyer Sylvia Stoltz in Germany. Stoltz is on trial for what the German government falsely labels Holocaust denial. During a recess, Monica was apprehended by German authorities and has been held in administrative detention since January 10. The Jewish advocacy group Bene Brith Canada has filed complaints against Monica with the German government and appears to be taking credit for her detention there. Allison Chablot lives in Derbyshire County, England, and according to the UK Daily Mail, is accused of calling the gas chambers "a hoax" and has been taken to court, quote, "in what is believed to be the first private prosecution in the UK for anti-Jewish racism." The Private Party refers to the Committee Against Anti-Semitism. Ms. Chablot hopes to turn the tables. She writes, quote, "Following previous treatment of me by Derbyshire Constabulary, including six arrests, unwarranted detention, and seizure of my property, they are seemingly reluctant to carry out any proper investigation into harassment of which I am the victim." In regards to, in regards to knowledge about the Holocaust, America appears to lag well behind other Western nations. We are not informed about Allison nor Monica, nor were we told much during Ernst Zundel's two trials in Toronto during the 1980s. We can only speculate as to the reasons for this apparent blackout. But with counsel's permission, I'd like to paraphrase Lutheran pastor Martin Niemöller. First, they came for America's white nationalists, and I did not speak out because I was not a white nationalist. Then they came for anti-Israel activists, and I did not speak out because I supported Jewish supremacism in Palestine. Then they came for the revisionists, and I did not speak out because I was ignorant of revisionism. Thank you.
Are there communications today from counsel? Counselor member Kiossopathy?
This is regarding the Human Rights Commission. And the Human Rights Commission had their monthly meeting on Wednesday, last Wednesday, and there was a huge turnout. I think over 50 people were there, and it was a pretty long meeting, three and a half hours it took. And at the end of the meeting, it was decided that the Human Rights Commission is going to start taking names to appoint residents of Ann Arbor. That's the only requirement. There isn't any educational law, any other, you need to be a resident of Ann Arbor and kindly send your interest to serve in the task force. This task force is regarding setting up, not only writing up the charter, but setting up a police oversight board. And you need to be sending the, your resumes or your interest And the deadline is January 29. And the Human Rights Commission will reach back to you, letting you know whether you were selected or not, and if you are selected, what the next steps is going to be. So I strongly urge everybody to, everyone, I've been getting continuous emails since the Wednesday meeting. I urge you to write to the Human Rights Commission directly to, if you're interested in serving. It's about a six-month commitment to get this going. And thank you very much for all the interest you are showing in this.
Counselor member Ackerman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Friday, we received some very useful information regarding a new DTE project that will be happening in the south side of Ann Arbor, as well as a sister project on the north side. With regards to the south side's project, DTE will be laying new transmission lines and from our substation at South 8th Street all the way to the north side of North Campus, terminating around the power center at Glen and Huron. The most residential area through which this transmission line will cut, will cut down Granger and South Forest through both wards three and four. I've gone about attempting to schedule a community meeting, and DTE has agreed to come and provide information to any neighbors affected by this construction. We're working with all three parties to come up with a date and location, but more to come there.
Counselor member Lum?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'd just like to pass along information about an upcoming seminar that is not a city-sponsored event, but it's co-sponsored by Mathi Botanical Gardens and Nichols Arb. And it is going to be held at the, first, the event is about, the title is "The Impact and Management of Whitetail Deer in Our Neighborhoods." It's January 25th, from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. The U of M School for Environment and Sustainability, it's again hosting this seminar. The location is the Dana Building on the U of M Central Campus at 440 Church Street. The brief description that was provided by the U of M School for Environment and Sustainability is as follows. The University of Michigan School for Environment and Sustainability Conservation Ecology is hosting Dr. Bernard Blossi, an associate professor at Cornell University. Dr. Blossi will share evidence of deer impacts from his work on multiple ecological stressors. He will also review how Cornell University and surrounding communities have dealt with deer management and showcase methods that are beginning to improve living conditions for other species. I think this is an important opportunity for folks to hear from a recognized expert on this issue, and the educational opportunity, I think, is also significant and obviously relevant for Ann Arbor. Again, that's Thursday, January 25th, 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. at the U of M Dana Building at 440 Church Street. Thanks.
Further communication from counsel? I'd like to request the confirmation of the following appointment that was presented to City Council for consideration on January 8, 2018, Kurt Zell to the Board of Review. May I have a motion, please? Moved by Counselor Ackerman, seconded by Counselor member Westfall. Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? It is approved. I'd like to recommend the following nominations for your consideration to the Elizabeth Dean Fund, Susan Perry, to the Housing and Human Services Advisory Board, Paul Sheer, Floria Tsu, and to the Zoning Board of Appeals, Charlotte Wilson. We now come to the consent agenda. May I have a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda? Moved by Counselor Craple, seconded by Counselor Mary Ackerman. Discussion, please, of the consent agenda. All in favor? All opposed? The consent agenda is approved, with 11 council members present, all voting in the affirmative, thus satisfying the eight-vote requirement with respect to CA 6. May I have a motion, please, to approve the minutes? Moved by Counselor member Grant, seconded by Counselor Westfall. Discussion, please, of the, oh, I skipped our public hearings. My apologies. Yes, I did. All right, well, let's pretend that never happened. We'll move on to our public hearings. Public hearings are opportunities for members of the public to speak to counsel and the community about matters of municipal interest. To speak at a public hearing, one need not have signed up in advance. Your speech at a public hearing must relate to the specific subject matter of the public hearing. Speakers have three minutes in which to speak, so please pay close attention to the time clock. As a matter of courtesy, we may have only one person speaking at a time. And finally, if you require assistance in speaking before counsel, we'd be delighted to provide it to you. Public hearing number one, an ordinance to amend Chapter 55, zoning, rezoning of .32 acres from TWP Township District to R1C Single Family Dwelling District, Bibby Properties, south of Dexter Road, west of North Maple Road. Is there anyone who would like to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, this public hearing is closed. Public hearing number two, an ordinance to amend Chapter 55, zoning, rezoning of .66 acres from TWP Township District to R1C Single Family Dwelling District, McCowan Properties, 2633, 2647, and 2651 Dexter Road. Is there anyone who would like to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, this public hearing is closed. Public hearing number three, resolution to approve 1540 White Street Brownfield Plan. Is there anyone who would like to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, this public hearing is closed. We have before us the regular work session minutes of December 11, 2017, and the regular session meeting minutes of January 8, 2018. Moved by Counselor member Grant, seconded by Counselor member Westfall. Discussion, please, of these minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? They are approved. B1, an ordinance to amend Chapter 55, zoning, rezoning of .32 acres from TWP Township District to R1C Single Family Dwelling District, Bibby Properties, south of Dexter Road, west of North Maple Road. Moved by Counselor Smith, seconded by Counselor member Warpahowski. Discussion, please, of B1. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is approved. B2, an ordinance to amend Chapter 55, zoning, rezoning of .66 acres from TWP Township District to R1C Single Family Dwelling District, McCowan Properties, 2633, 2647, and 2651 Dexter Road. Moved by Counselor Warpahowski, seconded by Counselor Smith. Discussion of B2. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is approved. C1, an ordinance to amend Chapter 55, zoning of Title V of the Code of the City of Honor, City of Title V of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor, to add Section 583 Solar Energy Systems. Moved by Counselor member Ackerman, seconded by Counselor member Grant. Discussion of C1, Counselor member Ackerman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the months since we last spoke about this issue, staff has hosted three community meetings in the southeast, northeast, and west sides of town to solicit input. These events were well-attended, and as the memo shows that circulated and posted in Legistar, the results show pretty common trends. Two of the three meetings were overwhelmingly against allowing solar-mounted, excuse me, ground-mounted solar panels in front yards, with one having questions, but generally in support. With that feedback, staff has suggested counsel move in one of two directions, the first being accepting the ordinance as written. If that's the direction counsel would like to move, I think that there are some practical changes we can make and consider, although I would rather counsel move in the second direction, which is to deny ground-mounted solar panels in front yards. We've been provided with two ordinances, and I believe the direction to move would be the no-frontyard alternative. As I've stated to colleagues before, I fundamentally have some question about whether or not accessory structures should be allowed in front yards to begin with, solar being one, but maybe not even the greatest offender of the currently allowed accessory structures. Although this is the one before us, and we have an opportunity to protect the character of some of our neighborhoods tonight. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and move the alternative ordinance in Legistar, this is attachment four, to File 171248. Just to quickly summarize, sorry, this would be a movement to amend, and just to quickly summarize what this is, it would be removing any definitions or references to ground-mounted solar and front yards, as well as provision of screening that is only relevant to front yard ground-mounted solar. I won't read it in its entirety, but a redline version is available to the public online.
Seconded by Counselor Lum. Counselor Ackerman, you stole the floor.
I will yield my time right now. I'm happy to listen to colleagues and answer any questions, but I think this is the direction to move.
Counselor Lum?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Counselor member Ackerman, for your leadership on this. I'd like to thank staff for conducting the three community meetings in November on this ordinance and for providing both the memo summarizing the feedback from those meetings, as well as the verbatim comments. The feedback from those meetings was very clear. Residents don't want solar panels and arrays in the front yards of their neighborhoods, and when you read the verbatims, you get a real sense of how strong the opposition is. The feedback matches what I've received from second ward folks. During the time since this solar, this panels in front yards discussion began a few months ago, I've received a lot of input from residents that's been overwhelmingly in opposition. It's important to note that in virtually every instance of the feedback I've gotten, residents indicate they are strong supporters of solar and alternative energy sources, and most support allowing solar panels and arrays inside and rear yards. Their objection is with allowing solar panels in the front yards of residential neighborhoods. The objections are based on both safety and aesthetic concerns. While I'm no expert on safety considerations, the concern over aesthetics and changing the character of neighborhoods is a valid, legitimate concern. I understand and share, and I also appreciate the research that has been done and provided us by the residents here in attendance tonight and others on this safety aspect of that, that front yard solar arrays would pose. It's also clear the objections to solar systems in front yards is not an unfounded view of just residents in Ann Arbor. The memo from staff we received stated, quote, "Clearly, the majority of communities do not allow solar panels in the front yard," period, unquote. There are good reasons for that. Primarily, the solar panels and systems are unattractive and incompatible with the character of residential neighborhoods, something folks reasonably care deeply about. In response to the strong negative feedback, staff has prepared, as we all know and appreciate, an alternative ordinance, and I appreciate that Counselor member Ackerman is moving that ordinance, which would not allow solar systems in residential front yards. I think the alternative clearly reflects the will of the people, especially those in the neighborhoods that would be impacted by it, and I believe it would be inappropriate for us to ignore our residents on such an important quality of life issue as the aesthetics and character of their neighborhoods. The alternative ordinance has been moved by Counselor member Ackerman, and I would encourage my colleagues to support this alternative versus the version of the ordinance that was initially presented us. Thank you.
Further discussion? So we have an amendment on the floor. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
All opposed? Roll call vote? So we now have an ordinance as amended, which would have the effect of prohibiting solar in the front yard. Further discussion of the main motion as amended? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Roll call vote? It is approved, it is...
Approved as amended.
It's approved as amended, thank you. DC1, resolution to approve the 1540 White Street Brownfield Plan. Moved by Counselor Craple, seconded by Counselor Warpahowski. Discussion, please, of DC1. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is approved. DC2, resolution to determine 14, pardon me, 1514, 1520 White... DC2, resolution to determine 14, pardon me, 1514, 1520 White, 701, 709 Henry, and 1521 State Street as blighted under the criteria of Act 381 of 1996. Moved by Councilmember Ackerman, seconded by Councilmember Grant. Discussion, please, of DC2. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is approved. DC3, resolution to determine 3401, 3457 Platt as blighted under the criteria of Act 381 of 1996. Moved by Councilmember Grant, seconded by Councilmember Ackerman. Discussion, please, of DC3. Councilmember Grant.
Just a quick appreciation to council for supporting these measures to help the Housing Commission move forward, hopefully with successful reconstruction of these properties for more housing in Ann Arbor.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is approved. DC4, resolution to approve request from Blum Production LLC, DBA Blum Meadworks, for a new small winemaker liquor license and MLCC outdoor service entertainment and dance permits to be located at 100 South Fourth Avenue, Suite 110. Moved by Councilmember Blum, seconded by Councilmember Calisopathy. Discussion, please, of DC4. Councilmember Blum.
I'll speak just very quickly to DC4 and DC5. These are two liquor license-related items, and the council liquor license review committee recommends council's approval of both. The first item, this one, DC4, is to approve a small winemaker liquor license for Blum Production LLC at 100 South Fourth. The DC4 resolution approves the liquor license, but it also makes it clear in the second resolve clause that the request for outdoor seating is not approved or rejected now, but needs to be applied for in conjunction with an application for sidewalk occupancy permit. The next agenda item, DC5, is more straightforward. It recommends the MLCC approve a downtown development district liquor license for Satchels Barbecue LLC at 221 West Liberty. Satchels Barbecue has provided the necessary documentation, including the evidence that it has invested at least $75,000 in the establishment. City staff and the liquor license review committee recommend council approval of both DC4 and DC5 as presented. Thanks.
Further discussion of DC4? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is approved. DC5, resolution to recommend approval of issuance of a downtown development district liquor license to Satchels BBQ 2 LLC. Moved by Councilmember Westfall, seconded by Councilmember Calisopathy. Discussion, please, of DC5. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is approved. DS1, resolution to approve construction of an additional drive approach on Huron Parkway south of Hubbard Street to service the DTE Apex Substation. Moved by Councilmember Blum, seconded by Councilmember Westfall. Discussion, please, of DS1. Councilmember Blum.
This is the agenda item related to the curb cut for the new DTE electrical substation to be constructed at Hubbard and Huron Parkway. You may recall that the issue was the location of the curb cut on Huron Parkway or on Hubbard, and that we postponed this at our December 18 meeting in order to obtain more information from DTE, U of M, and city staff. We discussed it again briefly at our work session on Friday, and we're still in the process of gathering all the information necessary to properly assess whether Hubbard access drive is feasible, which would avoid further disturbing the natural vista along Huron Parkway, and whether the proposed landscaping plan will be effective, and I'd like to thank my colleague, Councilmember Westfall, for compiling a thorough and well-thought-out list of the information that is required. On behalf of the U of M, Mr. Castillo has asked for a postponement until our next meeting, February 5, so that U of M and DTE can compile the information we've requested. It's important, we have all the information we've requested before making a decision on this, and staff indicated in response to a question posed this morning that there's no issue with postponing until our next meeting, so I move to postpone this item until the first meeting in February, February 5.
Seconded by Councilmember Westfall. Discussion of the postponement. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is postponed. DS2, resolution to amend the fiscal year 2018 budget resolution and authorize the addition of two full-time employee positions within the Sustainability and Innovation Office of the System Plannings Unit of the Public Services Area. Moved by Councilmember Smith, seconded by Councilmember Creepel. Discussion, please, of DS2. Councilmember Smith.
As many of you who have paid attention to the discussions that have been going on at the Energy and the Environmental Commission over the last year, major thrust of the work that has been done there has focused on how do we begin to effectively measure our success or lack thereof of implementing our climate action plan. Hiring two full-time positions in this office has been, for a number of years now, a top priority that's been identified by each of those commissions to be able to better compile the data that we've been collecting that we have not been able to thoroughly analyze so that we can begin measuring our success and implementing the programs that are outlined in the Climate Action Plan. So, this has come forward. There's been significant discussion over the last year at both Energy and Environmental Commission. Both have endorsed this, as well as the Climate Action Partnership, which came and gave us a presentation. These positions have been in their last two years' worth of presentations as vital ads. And I think, you know, as we have been discussing these things, I think this is essential. There are two people that serve in this capacity right now that are temporary employees that have to be laid off for two months every year, which puts a serious crimp into the work that they're doing, but more importantly, we've lost a lot of institutional knowledge as these people find other work, and, you know, that information and that knowledge goes with them, and that's a significant loss to our efforts to become a more resilient community and to mitigate climate change. So, I am glad that we are going to do this. I am completely in support of this, and I would simply add that philosophically, I believe very much that while we take a look at our FTEs and we have set a cap on them, we also give the city administrator goals and tell him what we expect to get done in a year. And I think, you know, fixing a set number of FTEs to that ties his hands, you know? I expect to hold him accountable for the goals that we set for him and his ability to accomplish that or not. If he has to do that through FTEs or through consultants, I want his professional judgment on that. So, I think that I have no concern about adding these two FTEs. I have no concern about the number of FTEs that we have. I believe that the administration is accomplishing the goals that we have set out for them to accomplish.
Further discussion? Councilmember Blum.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I suspect that many share Councilmember Smith's rationale for why this should be supported, and I suspect that this will pass tonight, but I will not be supporting it for a couple of reasons. First, I don't believe that we should be making budget-type decisions outside of the budget process, and that's exactly what this does. We're making two positions permanent that previously were temporary, which of course is a long-term financial and personnel commitment. As I mentioned last summer, when we voted on the resolution stating how the city intended to use the proceeds of the county mental health millage if it passed, I believe significant budget decisions should not be made mid-year or outside of the normal annual budget process. The city has a thorough, robust annual budget process that's beginning now and leads up to a final decision in May. I believe the information and knowledge gained by council during that process in terms of all of our priorities provides the necessary context for good decision-making, and because of that, I think we should avoid making budget-related decisions without that context and outside the normal process. It's just my view, but one I've consistently applied over the years. I'm also concerned about the number of city staff we've added recently. Assuming this passes tonight, we will have added over 20 new city staff in the last two years. Eleven of the positions are general fund positions, which has added over $1 million of recurring annual cost to the general fund, and many of the positions we've added are administrative in nature and not direct service positions. For those reasons, primarily the outside-of-process concern, I'll be voting no on this item. Thank you.
Further discussion? Councilmember Grant.
Thank you. I'm pleased to support this, having sponsored more than one of these amendments for temporary positions, and it certainly, I know that it was my expectation and that I've stated publicly that we wanted, or at least I wanted, these to be moved from temporary to permanent positions, and I'm thrilled to see them. From my perspective, we often in the budget process have something that's incredibly frustrating to me, which is last-minute amendments that can come up anywhere up to the day of, the, you know, hours before the meeting starts, where we've added upwards of $1 million to the budget for projects that are often, from my perspective, a lot more discretionary than something like having sustainability staff. This is in line with one of our main council priorities, and I'm thrilled to support it.
Further discussion? Councilmember Eaton.
I'd really like to support this, but I share the concerns expressed by Councilmember Blum. I believe that our sustainability efforts have to be integrated into everything we do, rather than forming a small, a separate staff to take on those responsibilities. So, I would prefer that we have a couple of members of our staff be in charge of overseeing all of our sustainability efforts, but that sustainability become an integral part of all of our processes rather than a separate, so I'll be voting against this.
Further discussion? Councilmember Ackerman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can appreciate some of the concerns around process, although I also appreciate that we passed a two-year budget plan, and that after a year of trying to take action around sustainability measures and adding more goals to the city administrator's plate, it seems reasonable that a year into that two-year process, we may need to reevaluate and move from temporary staffing to full-time staffing. With regards to how do we implement sustainability into the day-to-day actions of all of our city staff, all 740, maybe 742 of our full-time employees, I think it's important to note that that is critical, that this has to be on the forefront of the minds of everyone who works at City Hall, everyone who works out of the Wheeler Center. But unless we create a culture around accountability for doing so, we won't be able to do that. And sometimes accountability does mean hiring people who can lead initiatives both inside City Hall and outside of City Hall and the broader community to push us in that direction. Accountability doesn't just happen. Sometimes you have to resource it. And I'm glad that we're going to move to a more stable, more permanent means of creating that accountability, both for our internal employees, but also to take that accountability and that spirit of accountability out into the community and help people achieve their goals to create a more sustainable community.
Further discussion? Councilmember Westfall.
Thank you. I'm happy to support this agenda item. We've, as others have said, we've been talking about how to build capacity in our sustainability goals, and I'm pleased that we have, that we voted for the resources to do this. I think organizationally, you know, we have to trust that the administrator has a vision for why these positions are being resourced where they are, and I fully expect that these, this investment will pay off, not just theoretically with regard to meeting benchmarks about our overall city sustainability, but also, you know, financially with regard to how much the city as an organization and the community as a whole can save with regard to efficiency and reduced fossil fuel consumption. So, I'm pleased that this is moving forward, and on the other hand, I'm also challenging the administration to make sure we continue to demonstrate that these are truly investments that will pay the community back.
Further discussion? Councilmember Creepel.
Thank you, Mayor. As Councilmember Ackerman said, I can appreciate the concerns other councilmembers have raised in terms of kind of the process and things, but I would also, I would agree, though, that, you know, we've had temporary positions in place, and I think it is time to move to full-time positions. I think we need to make that commitment to say we are committed to doing this, and it is important to do it. I think through that, we can help create the culture we do need throughout the city. I think with that comes creating the actual policies, getting those in place, and then different processes and procedures as we move forward. I think also, as I said, with the, you know, helping create the culture, I think one of the things we'll need is what are going to be, looking at some point, what are going to be our measures for success. That Councilmember Westfall briefly touched on in terms of that, you know, how are we meeting our goals and to ensure that we're actually tracking those as we go along to make sure that the resources we're committing to today are actually achieving the goals we want them to. Thank you.
Councilmember Warpahousky.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. For my part, I have to confess that I was surprised when I saw that this was required to be voted on, when we approved a budget that included moving the funding for these positions from single year to recurring, and at a level necessary to sustain these positions as recurring positions. I thought we were done when we passed the budget, and so I've been interpreting this as almost correcting a Scrivener's error when we didn't adjust the FTE count to match what we budgeted for. So, I can hear the concern that we want to make long-term budget decisions during our budget process, but I think I, for my part, that's what I thought we were doing when we approved the budget. For the part that, I would agree with Councilmember Eaton that we want sustainability to be in every part of the organization, and I think that means we need people who are minding it. We want legal actions to be throughout every part of the organization, but we have a law office, you know, an attorney's office, to make sure that happens. We want safety to be through every part of the organization, but we have a safety office that makes sure that happens. We want use of technology to be in every part of the organization, and we have an IT office to make sure that happens, and we make sure that we give these departments and these offices adequate funding and staffing to bring these values and practices throughout the organization. I think sustainability is the same, and if we want to see our organization and our city live up to our professed value, putting our long-term commitment to what our words say is an important part of that process.
Further discussion? Councilmember Blum.
Yeah, I would just like to clarify that this requires seven votes because this is amending the budget. What this does is it amends the FTE budget for fiscal year 18 to make the two sustainability positions permanent or full-time rather than temporary. These positions are the same ones that have been funded each year with the $165,000 cost. Prior to fiscal year 18, they were one-time costs. In fiscal year 18, the administrator made them recurring costs, and although the dollars were added in fiscal year 18 as recurring costs, the FTE budget was not increased because they were temporary positions. Hence, this is a budget amendment.
Further discussion?
I'm delighted to support this. You know, we've, for years, altered our budget to add resources on a non-recurring basis to this function. In our most recent budget, we altered that to be recurring, and now we are modifying it so that those positions are plainly permanent. The expansion of Ann Arbor's permanent staff in this area has long been a goal of the resident advocates and experts who come to us and tell us what, how they believe the city should be addressing critical climate action issues. This is an area of incredible importance, I believe, to residents of the city. We at this table have expressed our commitment to that by virtue of, you know, a number of measures, most recently, the passage of the Use Resolution for the County Mental Health, Public Safety, and Rebate Millage. The residents supporting that so wholeheartedly, I believe, ratifies in many respects our decisions here as to how to use those funds that are coming back to us from the county. And one of those major areas of funding is in climate action, and without staff to support that and guide that, we will have difficulty in affecting our ambitious but nevertheless critically important climate action goals as articulated in the Climate Action Plan. This effort, this resolution, moving these positions from temporary
This effort, this resolution moving these positions from temporary to permanent will be an important step towards achieving those critical goals. Further discussion? Councilmember Bannister.
Well, thanks. When, I think my people in Ward 1 are very concerned about the affordability in our city, and whether they're a high property tax property or a low property tax property, both sides are asking, have asked me and continue to ask me to be very careful with the property tax issues and the budget. So, I do, I am committed to, as we've all mentioned tonight, the sustainability initiatives in the city, and I think I understand they're temporary, needing to be full-time, but as a gesture to the seriousness of the affordability issue, I think an important gesture to make would be to not support this until we can go through the budget process and consider all citizen budget priorities at once at that time. Thank you.
Councilmember Ackerman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a point of clarity and opportunity on the affordability element of this is that we wouldn't necessarily be increasing cost, but instead changing the nature from temporary to permanent of these employees. In addition to that, there is opportunity for overlap between sustainability measures and affordability initiatives, a very critical one that the county currently staffs is weatherization. When it's cold and people's windows aren't sealed, their furnaces aren't working to their highest efficiency, it creates, you know, an unsafe condition in which to live, but it also increases your utilities bills, and the opportunities to take sustainability dollars and apply them to things that decrease recurring costs for tenants is an affordability measure, not just tenants, sorry, homeowners as well, because we do have furnace programs that we support to help low-income families install new furnaces. So, there is overlap to both, and making sure that we have the permanent staffing in place to make sure that we're pushing forward on those initiatives as effectively and efficiently as possible, I think, is one of the key goals of this. So, I think there is a win for affordability here as well, as we try to look at ways to take sustainability dollars and get some, get some secondary wins in affordability as well.
Roll call vote, please, starting with Councilmember Warpehowski.
Councilmember Warpehowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Challosopathy?
Yes.
Councilmember Bannister?
No.
Councilmember Westfall?
Yes.
Councilmember Lum?
No.
Councilmember Grant?
Yes.
Councilmember Ackerman?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Eaton?
No.
Councilmember Craple?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries with eight-three, thus satisfying the eight vote, the seven vote requirement. Do you have communications today from our city attorney?
You were provided earlier today a non-privileged memo from Stephen Postuma regarding the CPPC, which is the Co-produced Policing Committee. Some questions had come up regarding the charter and collective bargaining agreements. I believe you have a working session on this, so I'm not going to address it, but it is attached and available to the public.
We have before us the Clerk's Report of Communications, Petitions, and Referrals. May I have a motion to approve? Please move by Councilmember Craple, seconded by Councilmember Smith. Discussion, please, of the Clerk's Report. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The Clerk's Report is approved. We now come to public comment general time. To speak at public comment general time, one need not have signed up in advance. Speakers have three minutes in which to speak, so please pay close attention to the time clock. As a matter of courtesy, we may have only one person speaking at a time, and finally, if you require assistance in speaking before council, we'd be delighted to provide it to you. Is there anyone who would like to speak at public comment? Seeing no one, public comment is closed. Are there communications from council? Do we have a closed session today?
Not for anything from our office.
We have a motion to adjourn. Please move by Councilmember Grant, seconded by Councilmember Westfall. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned.